All right, is the recorder on?
Yes, it is.
I can't hear you Barbara, but I can hear you through the door.
It's on Jamie. I can hear Barbara, so I can relay.
Welcome everyone to, we'll get started at 6:31 to the Tuesday, April 20th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. As Chair of the Barrington Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we're utilizing Microsoft Team for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft Team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in the meeting through dialing 664-0240 or the conference ID for this meeting. We will start with a roll call vote for our members in attendance. My name is James Jenison, I am the Chair, Jeff Brand, Vice Chair.
Brand, aye. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can't hear him, is it just me, or is it?
I heard Jeff.
I don't hear anybody.
Yeah, but you're the only one that can't hear Jamie.
Can you hear us now?
I see you, can you hear me?
I can hear, I can.
I can't hear you, I must have someone on my speaker.
Marsha, yours is very weak.
I'm gonna... Can you hear me now?
We can, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you, I just went back to the computer, sorry about that. Jeff Brand, I...
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Present.
Andy Knapp.
Present.
Ron Allard.
Allard, present.
Candace Krantz.
Present.
And Buddy Hackett. Missing Buddy? All right, um... I don't know if, uh...
Jamie, you have alternate members, you have a new member on there?
All right.
Donna will be here tonight.
Okay, and our new member, new alternate, Andrew Melnikas, am I saying that right?
Yes, you are.
Thank you for attending and welcome to the Board. We look forward to having you. We also have the Town Planner, Marsha Gassis, and Barbara Irvine, the Land Use Administrative Assistant. We will push the meeting minutes to the end.
Jamie, yeah, one request for, if you're not speaking, if you can mute your mic, there's a lot of background noise right now on the line.
Thank you. We're gonna shuffle around the agenda here just to get through some stuff, we have a couple to be continued. So, we'll start with Sunset Rock LLC, request by applicant for site review for the operation at Brock's. And I believe, uh... Who do we have here for that?
Michael Wright with Respec.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. We are finalizing some things with Dover's engineer at this point, and we would like to request a two-week, uh, two-month continuance.
Right. Does anyone have questions for Michael at this point? And so I think, is that May 18th you're looking for?
Uh, let's see.
That sounds right. Up two months, you said, I'm sorry, I just went a couple of weeks.
The year's flying by for me, so May sounded right.
It's crazy.
That'd be June 1st.
Okay, that sounds good.
The 1st to the 15th, yep.
So what's left, what are you working on? We are discussing some variations on the design with Emery and Garrett, whether we incorporate some of their ideas into our design and push some of our benches around. So it's really just going back and forth with who wants, you know, because we have stormwater they would like into their well, and it's how they would like us to discharge that, and it's gone back and forth a little bit, but we're very close.
Fair enough, and for the new members, this is, just, I'm sure you've read up, but this is, Brock's is trying to expand a section into Barrington that abuts Dover and out of consideration to the impact that it may have on Dover's wells that are very close proximity, they're working closely with Dover to go over any details and make sure everybody's happy with the project. So if there's no further questions, a motion to continue to June 1st.
I make a motion to continue application 236-4-gr-20-sr to 1 June 2021.
I'll second the motion. Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp, Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jenison, aye, motion approved, see you June 1st.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna jump to number four. For the Hendersons', request by applicant for the two lot subdivision. And I believe Mr. Garvey is here with us tonight.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
My understanding, you're looking to continue as well?
Yeah, we're looking to continue, our surveyor ended up with COVID.
Oh, no.
Just coming out of his fog yesterday and today.
Do you have a date in mind?
We're gonna try for May 4th, he said he could have everything ready hopefully by the middle of next week, so.
Right, does anyone on the Board have questions for Mr. Garvey?
Has there been any progress on the, on the issue of the access, the right-of-way access?
Yeah, actually I will have a, hopefully I'll have from DOT a full driveway permit in place at that point in time. And working right now through a couple of different avenues with both the previous owner and the owners that are currently in the other house.
In the salon.
Yeah, I'm gonna start working with them probably the beginning of next week, I'm waiting for a piece, a couple of pieces of paper from Mr. Henderson, so.
All right, if there's no further questions, a motion to continue to May 4th.
I make a motion to continue application 239-1.1-tc-21-two-sub-to-for-May-2021.
I second that.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Steve Diamond. James Jenison, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Motion carries, we'll see you May 4th, thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well. And jumping back to number three, 121-28-gr-20-sr, Mr. Todd Green, Barrington Shores LLC. Mr. Worth, welcome, how are you?
Unmute please.
Star six, or, there you go.
Mr. Worth, we can't hear you.
Yeah, you're muted Greg.
Hey, excuse me, Jamie, we have, don't we have one more vacancy to fill today, tonight? Our buddy's not here, do we have somebody else? No, we're filled, Barbara.
We have enough for a quorum, we don't usually seat the alternates just because someone's missing, do we?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, all right, I apologize.
Just add somebody.
We've never had alternates before, I guess, so I...
Yeah, it's been a while.
I thought, I thought because they weren't always in attendance and here to attend, that we don't seat them unless... No, all right.
They're here, just, just to say basically, you know, that they're, they're sitting, you know, for...
I apologize Andrew, I will add you to my roll call.
No problem.
Thank you, Barbara was, Barbara was on it.
Thank you Barbara. All right, going back to the Barrington Shores LLC.
Thank you, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. My name is Gregory Worth, I represent Barrington Shores LLC. For the new members, I'll just give a brief history, this is the Barrington Shores Campground. It's a little over 24 acres, it's a tax map 121 Lot 28. The campground has been there for approximately 40 years. The zone is general residential with the Swains Lake Water Management Zone overlay. It is an existing non-conforming campground, and what the campground would like to do is add sites. At this point in time, the plans, which have been before the Board for some time, have 24 new sites, which we are proposing. All of the waivers that we need have been approved by the Board with the exception of one. That is a waiver of Section 4.7.210, which refers to water quality treatment facilities needing to be designed to NHDES standards. When we were last before the Board, two weeks ago, there were six remaining issues that DuBois and King had requested of us, and I'll go through them each individually so you know where we are. Number one, they had requested standard AOT stormwater water quality volume worksheet calculations, which have been provided to them. Number two, they wanted us to specifically identify the proposed size of the proposed V2B1 filtration device to confirm that it meets water quality sizing requirements. We have done that. Number three, they requested the test pit information that was done a little over two weeks ago to confirm that the proposed storage was above the seasonal high water table. We have provided DuBois and King with that. Next, they had requested that we correct the outlet elevation of the emergency spillway throughout the plan set. That has been done. Number five, they requested riprap outlet sizing calculations. We have provided them with that. And the last measure was, they had talked about changing the side slope design from 2 to 1 to 2 and 1/2 to 1, and after discussion with them, we have come to an understanding that we will, that it will remain 2 to 1, and they are satisfied with that. What I'd like to do very briefly is just turn this over to Tobin Farwell, our engineer, because he is the one who has been specifically speaking with them. We had understood as of about noon today that we would have a letter from them. We don't yet, because it has to be signed off on by Jeff Adler, DuBois and King, but I'm gonna let Tobin speak very briefly to confirm that we do have an understanding with them. They are satisfied with what we have provided and are willing to sign off on the waiver. So Tobin, can you hear me?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so I have been working with Ross Santalus over at DuBois and King, he is the project engineer, and Jeff Adler is the principal in charge, so Ross and I, he had some comments as Gregory was describing. I responded to those comments, but I didn't want to change the plans because, to make sure we were under agreement with my responses. Ross got it, discussed it, and agreed with, as we said, with the changes that I was proposing. And so therefore I did submit plans to him and have been expecting a, you know, a final review letter. I even spoke with Ross today, and he is just unable to get ahold of Jeff to, to issue forth that final letter. But I have gotten emails from, from Ross stating such that he is satisfied, you know, satisfied, please move forward, submit the plans as you've proposed, and I did that, but we, again, we haven't got the official letter from them, but we have been working closely with them and have gotten emails saying, "You're good to go."
With the exception of that, the only thing left would be our request for conditional approval of the site plan. So I would leave it at that, if anyone has questions, we would be happy to respond.
Good, thank you, the Board have questions?
Marcia, I've got a question for you, so have you received any communication from DuBois and King about this?
Well, we've been, we've been, we have been discussing the possibility, because I know Jeff seemed to be on board, provided everything was taken care of from the applicants, and I'd already gotten to the point where this could definitely be conditionally approved based upon DuBois and King being satisfied as the final sign-off. There is that one remaining waiver which DuBois and King was on board with in regards to the Article 10. So I don't see a problem, these are kind of, these are things that DuBois and King would be the ones to actually give the blessing to, as we've done in the past with other applications.
But typically, we don't...
Typically, it's conditionally approved based upon a sign-off from DuBois and King.
Okay, because, I mean, normally we don't do that, it sounds like everybody's in agreement, but normally we wouldn't approve the waiver unless we had something in hand from DuBois and King.
Oh, the waiver, they, within the waiver, they didn't have an issue with in regard to the actual information they provided to the Board. They were on board with the waiver.
For 47210...
They were on board with the waiver.
And so we've got that in writing from them?
I believe, yes.
Yes, we do on their April.
Their response, in their response, it said they didn't have an issue with it.
Okay.
It was just, you know, sometimes, you know how we'll approve something and we'll say based upon, you know, DuBois and King being satisfied in this, in this instance, the applicant was really trying to get that, it's, you know, that approval first, as opposed to having any kinds of things laying out there. So that's why I don't have an issue, but yeah, they definitely were on board, it's in the list of items they reviewed in regards to that, that waiver.
So what are we specifically waiving with 47210? I'm trying to pull up my old stuff because I don't have anything in my packet.
It was a drainage?
Yeah, that's, that's to follow AOT requirements, and so we were, because of size constraints, we didn't have a sedimentation forbey, so that's when we proposed the V2B1 proprietary sedimentation removal device.
Okay, so we're not waiving 47210, we're waiving the standards by which you're qualifying. And I don't know if I'm parsing words, but...
I, I agree, they're just doing it a little bit different way.
Right, because 47210 says water quality treatment facilities will be designed to New Hampshire Department of Standards, and if we waive that, that means that they don't have to do them to standards. We're saying we're just doing the different standards, I just want to be clear, that we're not waiving all standards or any standards, we're just allowing different standards.
I appreciate your angle on that, that's a good...
Yeah.
That was, because I didn't have any paperwork in front of me, I wanted to make sure I was clear that we weren't saying, eh, good enough.
Yeah, I know, that's it, Jeff Adler was like, "This works," there's always, there's always a number of ways to skin a cat.
Why can't we just, well, why can't we just phrase the waiver that we're waiving to 4.7.210 with respect to the forbey basin? And that, that's specifically addressed what we're talking about.
Yeah, I believe if you take a look at the April 2nd letter, the language that DuBois and King utilized was that the site has limited space in this area to provide a sedimentation forbey as required by NHDES. We are proposing a stormwater filtration system by shale concrete V2B1. That's the language that they put forward.
Yeah, and I like that, that's, that's jogging my memory, so. So when we get to that point, we'll recall that language. Does the Board have any other questions?
Yes, I wasn't here last time, it sounds like from what Mr. Worth was saying at the last meeting, the matter I was interested in on the adequacy of the water supply was already talked about and concluded, is that correct?
Yes, so the narrow view of it is that we don't have the purview to control such things, and it is the jurisdiction of the Water Department in this case that has control, and if they at some point feel they don't have enough water to supply to them, then that's their prerogative. I think that's kind of the short and skinny on it.
Appreciate the update, I might have had things to say at the time, but it's already happened and done, moving on.
Yeah, and we did get the, the letter saying that there, I don't know if you saw that letter Steve, there was a letter, and it was more to them about, it was more to the Water District about the availability of water, that they weren't deficient, some of the pumps weren't working optimized, but they could be fixed and et cetera, et cetera, but they weren't seeing a problem with supply, and so they, but they didn't specifically address the campground's increase is something we asked for, but that's where we deem that it's really beyond our purview to keep going for more information, knowing that if the Water District decides to no longer provide them water, then that's a course that they can take. Fair? Anybody want to add to that, my, my little, I might have missed something, left something out for Steve's benefit?
No, I, I agree with you, I mean, the Water District came back and said, "There's not a problem with the aquifer, there's plenty of water," what they noted was, "There was a problem with the back flushing in, in the system, and that there had been some degradation of flow from the pumps, and that they were actually, you know, originally by design, the pumps could have been a larger pump, so, but by regular flushing, back flushing, they said that they thought they could, you know, mitigate the problem, but ought to investigate upgrades in the future." So the whole issue had to do with the pumps and with the system itself and filtration, but they made a statement, there was not a problem with the aquifer, and Steve, specifically to your, your concerns about what happened during the drought, they said they didn't see any evidence that the aquifer level had dropped significantly even during the drought.
And any other questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna take the opportunity to open public comment specifically in regards to the waiver for 47210. So if there's anyone that would like to ask a question, make a comment, I will open that up at this point. You can either raise your hand, star six, or unmute your microphone. And I'll also check the conversation window to see if anybody wants to type a message. All right, hearing none, I'll close public comment. Does the Board have any further questions on this waiver? Does anyone offer language on this waiver, I'm trying to dig for it still, but if anybody has language they'd like to use?
Well, yeah, the language that DuBois and King used, or that Attorney Worth referenced a minute ago, I was trying to look through all my stuff, and I, I can't find that response from DuBois and King.
That's the April 2nd letter, if that helps, it's their number five. It's a very, it's a long paragraph on the second page.
Yeah, it talks about, you mean, the drainage analysis?
Yeah, it starts with drainage analysis.
Previous letter we recommended that the applicant provide, yep, that one.
Yep.
The proposed...
The applicant has submitted a waiver stating that the site has limited space in this area to provide a sedimentation forbey as required by NHDES. We are proposing a stormwater filtration system by shale concrete V2B1. The proposed proprietary stormwater filtration system appears to be an acceptable alternative to the sedimentation forbey.
Okay, can you repeat the sentence that talks about the shale concrete?
"We are proposing a stormwater filtration system by shale concrete V2B1. The proposed proprietary stormwater filtration system appears to be acceptable alternative to the sedimentation forbey."
So it's stormwater filtration by shale concrete?
V2B1.
V2B1.
All right, you ready for a motion, Jamie?
I am.
All right, so I make a, I make a motion to waive 4.2.7 to the site regulations for application 121-28-gr-20-sr with respect to stormwater filtration by shale concrete V2B1 as granting the waiver, well, not granting the waiver, which, I was looking for the words that had to do with specific site conditions. Specific circumstances relative to the subdivision or condition of the land in such subdivision indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Yes, that, that would be the ending of my motion.
Motion by Jeff Brand.
Second.
Seconded by Ron Allard. James Jenison, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Hey, good Ross, we're, we're in the meeting.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Andrew Melnikas.
Andy, aye.
Okay.
Andy, thank you, motion carries, waiver is granted.
It seems that they are moving forward, they're granting a...
47210.
They're making a motion right now, so I, I said that pretty much, you know, we had...
Folks, if you can mute...
That's Tobin, Jeff.
Okay. All right, so we're taking care of the waiver.
Waiver is granted. All right, now, we are looking for conditional approval, I believe, if the Board has more questions, any questions, now would be the time.
I just wanted to say, I just got off the phone with DuBois and King, Ross over there, and he, he says yes, he unfortunately can't provide a letter tonight, but he agrees that we have agreed on everything that has been submitted.
Great, well, that's what we'll base our conditional approval on then, and waiting for that letter. If the Board doesn't have any questions, I'm gonna take the opportunity to open up public comment one last time.
Yeah, I would just say, consistent with what Marcia said before, as we're going through the draft notice of decision, then we can decide, maybe, it could be like a number three, that, you know, it's conditional upon receipt of the letter... the letter from Dubois and King.
Yep. And do we have any members of the public that would like to make comments or last questions? Star six, if you're dialed in and you want to unmute your phone or click the microphone icon. You can also type into the conversation bar. Do see a hand up, Mr. Nizwender.
Hi, James. Thanks. Yeah, so I represent Rosemary Lane, the Butters, in next to the campground. And there's been some questions on, I think, the overall setbacks in the border and the fencing from our concerns. And I was wondering if we could just maybe review the drawing that was done and let us see what the plan actually looks like again. I don't think we've ever physically seen copies of it. And we've only seen it flashed on the screen a little bit. And there's some concern that maybe we're not fully aware of what's being proposed and what's being voted on. We want to make sure that, you know, we have an understanding of what the campground's actually asking. Does that make sense?
Sure, yep, I can appreciate that. In the future, not that you'll be so heavily involved as you are with this one particularly, but most often those plans are available online through the website. You know, so you guys can certainly look at those so you're prepared ahead of time. And I apologize if you didn't understand that and would have taken that opportunity. But they are, and you're certainly more than welcome to call into the office and ask to come see copies or get a copy printed out. Those can be and would be provided to you. But we will take a minute. Does anybody have the plans that they could share on their screen?
Yeah, James, this is Ray.
Hi, Ray.
How you doing? I can actually share the screen.
And, you know, to the extent, you know, we're very far along in the process. I just want to say that, Matt. But I'm happy to go over and refresh your memory where we kind of landed on everything and what we're voting on tonight. So I hope it helps and everybody's still happy because it felt that we're pretty, we found a nice consensus somewhere along the road. So I'm hoping that's still the case.
And we're not voting on the buffer waiver tonight because we've already approved it.
Correct. So Ray, if you have, I guess, the best image to elucidate where that buffer, because it's kind of bounced around, changes, and I guess buffer and fence would be the most important to the neighbors there.
Okay, let me know if you guys see it.
I do see it.
All right, perfect.
Matt, do you see that?
Yep.
Great.
I think we're most concerned with the border around the Rosemary Lane area, not so much the rest of it. So maybe we could zoom in a little bit just to make sure we have a good understanding of what is happening.
Yeah, so I'll start with the front corner closest to the road. That's Mrs. Pantano's house, I believe. That was increased to an 80-foot buffer. That fence is, I believe, an eight-to-10-foot fence. It follows the landscape along that path where it turns the corner. And I think this is kind of the Perrys and more where you would consider the Rosemary, I guess. It's 100 feet at that angle. And that fence falls that contour as well. And then along the backside, where there seemed to be less of a concern from the Robinsons, it dropped to 50, paralleling that property line, but the fence does continue across there. There was still plantings on the landscape plan to filter that area and buffer it some more. Ray, do you have anything to add? I apologize if it kind of took over.
No, you're doing a great job. I'm just trying to hop over to the landscape plan, kind of.
If you can see that, Matt, that's kind of an extracted segment of what a typical planting area would look like.
Yes.
Yeah, Ray, if I can add, and so as Jamie just said, that's typical. It says buffer area, sampling area, but that buffering will extend down into, or actually up to the northeast corner by the fence, correct?
Yes, yeah. It's just that everything got enlarged, but that's the area that was the ground survey of the actual trees out of there. So that's basically explaining how the planning would be done with respect to the existing vegetation that's out there and how they would, you know, fill those areas in.
Yeah, and Ray, if maybe you could go to C5, there's a cross section of kind of how the fence is going to look. If that helps, it starts at six foot, closest to the road. And as the ground drops off, it increases to eight feet and then follows the contour of the land down to the back corner of the property.
Okay, this is the hall road. And this is going towards the back.
I think probably Matt and certainly I would be interested in a review on what commitments on the visual, on the vegetative buffer were as far as maintaining it go.
Yeah, that was my next question. Thanks, Steve.
Ray, could you refresh our memories on visual buffer maintenance?
To what extent?
You want me to read all the notes, basically? I can do that for you if you prefer. And I'll read through them now to see what's pertinent.
I mean, we're going to be filling them in with, you know, basically the trees that are going to be one-to-two-inch calipers, which are five to six inches in height. Then we're also going to be planting saplings in other areas that will kind of fill in on top of that along Hall Road itself. There's going to be, the fence won't be continuous. It's going to kind of have gaps where they're going to actually have evergreens kind of in between, along with, again, whatever low growth needs to be put into there. Keep in mind that there's a lot of hazard trees that need to be removed. So, I mean, there's nothing to take fights as well.
And for Matt and Steve, I think this is the most pertinent thing you're looking for, number five. And the note is, this buffer shall be maintained yearly. The buffer shall be walked and additional seedlings and shrubs shall be added to the buffer area. If there is a dispute over the buffer, the town code enforcement officer shall inspect the buffer and make a determination of additional planting.
Okay.
You know, so, you know, to be quite candid, there's probably not going to be a tree police out there doing much at any point, but if you find that it, everything dies off in the first year because, you know, we have an intolerable drought or something that's horrendous and something happens, there is recourse to go to town code enforcement, say, hey, I don't think the visual buffer is being maintained as in the plan notes. And then he'll take proper course to say, listen, you know, all your trees died. You got to, you got to get out there and put something else in there. So, I mean, because there are those situations that happen. It's not because they're neglectful or don't want to have a nice visual buffer. But there does, there is some recourse in there for you and that buffer.
Yep, and that's, I think, a little bit of what our concern is, just making sure that there is a plan and that there is something that allows for it to get replenished if it gets damaged by storms or droughts or weather, whatever. So that, I think that's acceptable.
And the plan here is actually for this to be done in accordance with the certified forester and arborist of what they recommend that's going to actually grow in these areas for that particular use.
Is there another area of concern that I can address, Matt, specifically?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, when we did a walkthrough, there was a lot of dead material there that is going to be removed. And I think our main concern is that, you know, initially when these plantings are done, you know, it will be fairly sparse in there. And we understand it's going to take a little time to have it grow into place and become somewhat worthy of a buffer. But, you know, we just want to make sure that that will be happening and it's taken care of and that it will look decent, you know, for years to come.
Yep, and I think with what they've gotten the notes here, I think that should happen. And like you said, there'll be some growing pains at first as the stuff grows in because the one-to-two caliper, you know, trees are not huge. But they should, they should provide something in the first year and more and more each year after, I hope.
And that's right. That's where the solid fence, Ray, kind of comes into play as well.
Yep. All right, anything else?
I think initially we had talked about a maximum fence height of 10 feet, but the plan is only showing eight.
Right, when you say maximum, I know we went back and forth on that. So I'm not going to pretend to remember everything, but I know, we didn't want to go over. There was some code issues for permitting going over, and then they become top-heavy and topple and based on grade and et cetera. It was a maximum of 10. So I don't know. And there may be with, you know, the grade, the way it plays out, that some sections may be nine foot six because it's just the way the ground is. I don't know. But, you know, for illustrative purposes, I think the goal is for an eight-foot fence. And some people didn't like that. So it was, from my recollection, it was, you know, a compromise. Some didn't want the fence because the fence wasn't look good. Some wanted taller, some wanted shorter. So I think that's where we landed. But I don't know if there's any sections that are 10, are there, Ray?
Yeah, none, there are not that are 10, no.
Okay, I didn't think so. I thought eight was the peak of it.
Thanks, Tobin. My mic was muted.
I think that's all I have. I'm not sure if there's any other members that are listening tonight. If they want to speak up, now is the time to do it.
Is anyone else? We'll be happy to take your conversation, question, call.
And I want to say thank you.
Thank you, you know, we appreciate all the input from both sides. It's been a long process. But I think, I think you've got a good neighbor and as long as they continue to work together, I think it'll be a nice relationship.
Yep, we're hoping that's the case.
Yep, great. Anyone else before I close public hearing? I'll close the public comment. And the board, do we have any more questions?
Jamie, do you want me to stop sharing or?
Yeah, you can stop now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board has no further questions. I will read.
Okay, Jamie, I was just waiting for you to say, yeah, we're going to move on to the notice of decision.
Yep.
So I think there's two things that need to be modified on the draft notice of decision. One of them is under conditions precedent, number one. G on the draft is open, so I would move verbiage under F says, application will adhere to the recommendations of Andy Fast... Move that to G. And then for F, just to be consistent, would be to add that a waiver was granted from site regulations 4.7.2, parents 10, because that needs to be added because we just approved that waiver.
Yeah. I did send you guys another one. I apologize, but I tried to update it earlier today. So I don't, you may not have gotten that one, in which G, I did put in the, well, I did the one for the wall water quality. But we could fix that language and also.
Well, which version does the chair have to read?
I was trying to pull up the one she emailed. I've got the same one as you, Jeff, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I have it on email. And so, let's see, yeah.
I hear Barbara trying to tell me something. Oh, I can't open up the wind mail.
Oh, hey, you know what I can do? Hold on, hold on. Barbara, you reminded me. It may take me a second, but I did, let me see if I can share it with you folks. Okay?
I do have it. She sent out a PDF of it, right?
Yeah, but I think I can put it up on the screen if you.
Okay.
Give me a, give me a second.
I always get the wind dat thing. I can never figure out how to open.
Yeah, I have it if we need it. Well, then the other piece, while you're pulling that up, that was missing is that we want to add something, which I would say was be to the open number three, because I'm looking at the copy you sent out and it doesn't have that, would be to say that approval is contingent on receipt of correspondence from Dubois and King that all issues raised during review have been resolved, which is what we talked about a few minutes ago.
Well, Marcia's.
There it is, hold on.
I'm going to say, Matt's got another hand up. I'm going to give him an opportunity real quick while you're pulling that up. Matt, did you have one other thing to add?
Yeah, just real quick, I was wondering, I thought it might be helpful thinking about what you had said, James, about being able to get the plans online. If Barbara, when she sends out the PDF agenda, if she could maybe include like a link or just a note saying, you know, if you need copies of something, here's how to go about it so that in the future, you know, it's a little more evident of how to be, you know, more efficient so we're not like dragging the meeting down.
For any future meetings we have, if you click on the agenda, that is a link where they're bolded. If you click on that, it brings up all the information for the application right on the agenda.
Where that gets a little tricky is if things show up at the last minute, which sometimes it doesn't.
So you're still on there. Yep.
But yeah, Matt, I guess I don't go that route, so I couldn't educate on that part because I get mine printed out here in the office. But yeah, apparently if you go on the agenda on the website and click on the agenda, then you can click on the bold. And Andy, you going to add something? Let me just.
Are you telling me or?
Oh, I thought I saw you.
I think maybe if it was just a little more clear in that part that was sent out about clicking on it, you know, just giving some basic information of how to get there would be helpful, that's all.
All right, thank you. We'll work on that. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it and thanks for your time. Appreciate you letting me back in.
Anytime.
Did you notice the decision up on the screen now?
Nope, not in mine.
Not, because it shows.
It is, I see it.
Oh, thank you.
I see it.
I don't see anything.
I see the notice of decision.
Oh, I don't know what to do. Jeff sees it.
I see it as well, but only the very top part.
Right.
So I guess the question is, if I read the one I have, you can make a changements? Is that a word? Changements? Pretty sure that's not a word, but it came out, so I'm going with it.
What is it, Bob?
Well, either that or I would offer that we could just have Marcia read the notice of decision. There's nothing magic about you having to read it.
I know, she used to always do it for me.
I know, so it's time for her to reengage.
Reengage, all right. Let me find my, I've been moving around here now. All right.
Did you hear my comment earlier about adding number three about the approval of the receipt of information from Dubois and King?
Yeah, let me, hold on a second so I can.
I have it now, and my voice is all warmed up. Ready?
Hold on, hold on. Let me click out of this screen then if it's in the way.
I still like the idea of Marsha reading.
Feeling a little insulted, Jeff. I don't like the sound of my voice.
Um, no, it's not your voice, but you've been doing it a long time. Yeah, I could use a change.
All right. Marsha, if you'd like to read it?
Okay, hold on. Be patient with me, remember? Okay.
A little variety here, Leo.
Well, yeah, you know, been, been through a lot here. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start at the beginning. This is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board at its blah, 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 um, zero 21 meeting conditionally approved your application referenced above. A 3.4 conditional use permit was granted on December 1st, 2020 by the Barrington Planning, Planning Board with ado, with adoption of the modified boat inspection and acceptable letter from Swains Lake Water District. The waiver was granted from the article 6.2.3 parentheses 2 of the site review regulations to allow a 50-foot buffer for the north boundary with the map, with map, tax map 121 lot 37 and the south boundary along Hall Road and to reduce the buffer to 80 feet on the east boundary, except at the, at, at the 100-foot, the 100-foot buffer shall be maintained from the northeast corner boundary defined. I don't, and maybe that's supposed to be by instead of.
It should be to be. Yeah, that, that.
Find, okay.
To be.
To be. That's why we redo this.
Yeah. To be the northeast markers.
Northeast corners pins shown on the Stonewall Surveying Plan from Barrington Shores dated 10 November 2020.
Mine says, mine says 18 November.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is 18 November 2020.
Okay.
Okay. A waiver was granted on April 6th, 2021 from 4.7.7 parentheses 1, minimum allowable pipe diameter in any storm system shall be 15 inches. A waiver was granted on April 6th, 2021 from 4.7.7 parentheses 3, minimum depth of coverage for storm drain, storm drain 36 inches. A waiver was granted on April 6th, 2021 from 12 point, uh, 4.12 outdoor lighting. Okay, this is the, um, this is the one that we kind, we added. Waiver was granted from article 4.7.2 parentheses 10, water quality shall be designed to meet NHDES standards. Um, that's not necessarily a, um, condition of a precedent. It's a list of the waivers. So I don't know if you want to leave that one as the way it's written or I want to change that up. What do you think?
Well, well, it's also got to be on the, uh, I agree with you that it ought to be added here on this list, but it also does have to be in the conditions precedent under, add the following plan notes, because it's got to be a plan note, right?
Right. So it's just leave it the way it is and we'll add it with the other verbiage on the other end.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to the commencement of the, of any site work or recording of any plans. Since the, these precedent conditions will be met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. If all the precedent conditions are not met within six ca, calendar months to the day, whatever date, 2021.
Yeah, that would be 20 April.
Yeah. The approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreeable extension has been granted by the board. I will go through. Thank you for bearing with, with me on this, guys. Okay.
Do you want me to? I can read something.
No, that's all right. It's just, you know.
Yeah, go.
Because of my surgery, sometime, you know, it's a little, it's a little slow, but I'll make it through. Good therapy. Okay. Add the following plan notes. A waiver was granted to 6.2.3 parentheses 2, to allow a 50-foot buffer from the north boundary with the, with tax map 121 lot 37 and the south boundary along Hall Road to allow a 40-foot buffer and the, and the reduce, and to reduce the buffer to 80 feet on the, the east boundary, except that the 100-foot boundary shall be maintained from the northeast corner boundary defined by the two northeast corners pin, pins shown on the Stonewall Survey Plan for Barrington Shores, Barrington Shores Surveying Plan from Barrington Shores LLC dated 18th November 2020. A conditional use permit was granted as part of the application article 3.4 Commercial Recreational Facility. A waiver was granted from 4.7.7 parentheses 1, minimum allowable pipe diameter in any storm system shall be 15 inches. A waiver was granted from 4.7.7.3 parentheses 3, minimum depth of coverage for storm water drain, drain lines shall be 36 inches from the top of the, I think I got a repeat, from the top of the.
Yep, you're right.
Okay, take that.
It's a repeat, yeah.
Pipe, yep, to finish grade. E, waiver was granted from 4.12 outdoor lighting. Application will adhere to the recommendations by Andy Fast of UNH Cooperative Extension and Urban Tree Service to the fullest extent possible. And then for G, which we, I, I had waiver granted from article 4.7.2 parentheses 10, and then it's, I had water shall, water quality shall be designed to NHDES standards. But we also then had, I don't know, um, something, did we want to use the one with the Shea?
Concrete.
Con, concrete V, V2, V1.
Yeah, that was the, uh, right, because that was specific, uh, waiver that we granted. So that's probably what we ought to use.
Okay. And you want that, that, just that specific facility?
It fits under H, I think.
Well, I.
Yeah. We ought to just repeat the wording that's from the, the motion and that we actually passed.
Yeah. Do we want that? I had put it in G, but do we want?
Yeah, no, that, that's appropriate.
Okay. So we can put it in G. We'll just fix the language.
Andy, you had a question?
Yeah, Marsha had just read that on the north side, there was a 40-foot buffer and everything I have from the road in to the, to their, to their road, I have is a 50-foot buffer. Am I just missing that or did that change?
I thought I heard. I, I thought she said 50, so I didn't hear what you heard.
I heard her say 42.
Okay, so. The draft notice says that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I heard 40 and I was like, wanting to make sure that it was clear.
Yeah. Just my, just my language.
Yep, no problem. Says 50, so.
All right. So we're adding that language at, at G. H, I had, the applicant's engineer self, shall certify in writing that the drainage improvements have been constructed as approved. Where did you, you, I know we mentioned, um, well, I guess we can do that there. Because I had D and K signing off, but I had that down on number three.
That's what I had also. That's where I made the note.
Okay. So we'll go back up to the, the, um, boat. Rules pertaining to boats. All boats and watercraft shall be inspected and, and to the extent necessary and/or appropriate to maintain compliance with New Hampshire statutes related to the Clean Drain Dry Campaign. RSA 148, 487, debt, uh, colon C hyphen C mandates that all visible mud, fish or animals must be removed. RSA 487 16 dash D mandates that the water be drained from the equipment and, engine, water intake systems, village, live, live wells, bait buckets, clean and dry, anything that comes into contact with boat, water, boats, uh, trailer, equipment, et cetera. Documentation on the issue of foreign aquatic species, i.e. milfoil and clean, dry, clean, drain, dry campaign will be available. All sites will be allowed no more than one boat slash watercraft tied up at any time. Boat slash watercraft tie-ups are restricted to the designated area near the boat launch. 12-boat air flash watercraft maximum, no piggybacking. This area is first come, first served. The campground reserves the right to further monitor and to, to the extent necessary and/or appropriate modify current existing rules and regulations and issue additional rules and regulations to ensure the harmonious recreational experience for fellow campers and the public.
Andy M., do you have a question?
Yeah, just a random question. Who does the inspections on the boats?
They do. Uh, the campground.
They do, okay. Thank you.
Two, revise the following plan notes. Add the NHDES Subsurface Bureau CA number. Three would be D and K will sign off on the engineer review. Is that appropriate or somebody want?
Uh, here's what I was thinking. Approval, uh, approval is contingent on receipt of correspondence from DuBois King that all issues raised during review have been resolved. Does that sound appropriate?
Sound appropriate to me.
I can send you those words if you want.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Then I had, this is extra space there. Um, the other was precedent, uh, those types of comments that are, that, that, um, are common. Prior to the board's signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper print plan sets and supporting documentation as required in article three with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during review for the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans meeting the conditions of approval upon receipt of, of an executed bond for stabilization of the site. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproductive, reproducible 11 by 17 PDF in PDF format. Uh, doesn't necessarily have, we don't, we can cross that out. Uh, we can put 11 by 17. Typically what we do is, um, uh, scan those and upload it to the web, so. And then general and subsequent. Where no active and substantial work required under the, this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by the majority vote of the board so long as it apply, it is applied for at least 30 days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one extension for any proposed site plan. All other, all other plans must be submitted to the planning board to review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains and improvements indicated on the site plan. RSA 67439.
All right. Thank you for doing that, Marsha.
Great therapy. Thank you.
It was better than listening to Jamie.
I won't agree, but. Um, any last questions? Uh, if not a motion is in order.
Pardon me?
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Uh, how many additional campsites we talking about here in the latest plan?
24.
All right. Uh, the Morse decision says 25, so we need to have fixed that.
Nice catch. All right. Anybody else? All right, here are none. I think we are ready for a motion.
I make a motion to approve application 121-28-gr-20-sr.
Second.
I have a motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard. Uh, Candace Krans.
Krans, aye.
Uh, Andrew Melnickas.
Aye.
Uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Congratulations. Motion carries. Best of luck to you all.
It was a long journey, but hopefully you feel like it was worth it.
We got here.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you very.
Thank you, board, for all your effort in helping us get this through.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You as well.
Good night.
Night, guys.
All right, um. That's that. Go back to the minutes real quick before you forget. We got the minutes from April 6th. Anybody have questions, comments, concerns? Corrections, rather?
Jamie, are we doing five?
Pardon me?
Are we doing item five?
Did I skip one?
There is an item five on a building permit.
Oh, okay. Well.
Well, we can do, I mean, I, I don't think it's.
It matters then.
It doesn't really matter. You started the minutes. Yep, we'll knock them out. Yeah, let's knock them out. You didn't get. Say again?
I'm easily confused. We do things out of order. I'm, you know, I.
I know. I, I'm, thank you for helping me out because I do too. I'll jump around and. Hearing no corrections, we'll do a roll call vote as written.
I make a motion to approve minutes.
Second, Jeff Brand, second, was that Andy?
Yeah.
All right, James Jennison, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
abstain.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Andrew Melnickis.
Andy M, aye.
Andy M, all right. Thank you. Minutes are approved as written. Number, well, let's do other committees unfinished business. If anything discussed.
Don't, yes, so, well. Just a quick update. So a number of weeks ago at regional planning, the sidewalks for Barrington were approved. It was a little bit closer than I kind of expected, and so I just wanted to report back. The, the 1.2 million in sidewalks is, is going to happen. Can't remember really tight timing. So it's a bit of a competitive process. It was a certain amount of money that is allocated by DOT and that's what they spend pretty much period. That maybe will change if the Biden infrastructure, depending what happens with the Biden infrastructure bill. We'll see. What was interesting, Farmington in particular did follow best practices regarding walkability in the placement of their municipal buildings, and if any other town had done that, we might have been bumped off. So just a word of caution for future reference. How we handle the placement of municipal buildings could have pivotal repercussions in the future.
Do you know what that dollar figure is going to get us for sidewalks, Marcia?
Yep, well, 1.2 million is what the DOT approved. It actually has gone up because remember that project was about 800,000, but with their estimates, they, and the additional sidewalk we had asked for them to, to place in there to be able to cross the street. It, they, their estimate went up to 1.8 million dollars, so.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, it's a pretty big project for that, and I just want to stress because this was, there was a lot of people involved for a number of years getting here. I actually, and I have to, you know, hats off to the folks at TAC, which is the, the other side of the policy committee. They, they basically write a recommendation to the policy committee, which is what Steve, Steve is, you know, the final voting with the policy committee, but tax a lot of the planners and the DOT folks, and there's other people involved with the committee. But I almost had a heart attack because I went to the last tax meeting when they were going to vote on their recommendation and somebody, and I don't know if it was through the policy process or what it was on the way, but they had removed the Barrington sidewalks, and I said, what? What? We're off the list? How did that happen? And interestingly enough, I believe it was Rochester at the time was pushing for sidewalks along Route 11, which members of TAC actually said, whoa, 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 that's not town center type of walkability that we're looking for. And so in particular, I want to thank Chris Parker from Dover who said, well, I'll make a motion that, that we make a change in what was being approved, which actually allowed for like the, the Farmington project and four projects to get into the queue as opposed to one giant city. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up, but this is, this is a process that takes, takes years and it is very, I mean, I, I thank Steve too for, you know, being there, being in attendance because, you know, you volunteer for these committees and if somebody doesn't show up, you know, sometimes the town actually loses out and Steve was there to show up and vote. And I think that was really important.
Appreciate your volunteerism, Steve. Thank you.
Yes, there was someone who came to a previous meeting but didn't quite come to the right one, and that was, that would cost them. I appreciate you saying that. One other, so if we're done with sidewalks, there was one other thing from regional planning I wanted to pass on.
Sure.
Especially for Marcia. So there's a submittal window for SEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development, something. So it's coming, it's within a month or two, and I was a bit surprised that a lot of things can be considered economic development that you wouldn't necessarily think. So whatever your wish list of things is, you might want to think about sticking it on that list because it, a lot of the other things. It's easier to get money for something that you call economic development, so.
Have you got some examples, Steve? There's some oddball stuff?
Oh, there was 100 things on that list. I mean.
We do have a list. I think we're, we do have the, the list because see through the, because I also tried to meet with, actually, the economic development as many, much time as I've had the last few months, but I do believe we had some on the list, Steve. I'll have to look to see what it is, but we do have some.
One of the odd ones was generators for Durham, which I thought was more of an emergency preparedness thing. Maybe a good idea, but it wasn't exactly economic development from my point of view. Anyway, you might want to look at that, revisit that opportunity to see if there's anything you've overlooked, Marcia.
Buy a piece of land in town center. Control the development of it.
This is about, this is about finding money for, for whatever the town's looking to do.
Yeah, develop the town center with something other than a Dollar General or an Appa.
Yeah.
Well, a piece of that, whatever the next piece would be.
All right. Thank you, Steve, for that. I appreciate your time you spent doing that. I really do. All right, anything else? Business committees. Moving on to building permit for 128 Flower Drive. I don't.
I did, I did a draft. It's not in my folder though.
There was a draft in the folder.
Okay, good. Okay, I just don't have mine. Sorry about that. I basically took exactly what the road agent had placed, put on Flower Drive, regarding the Flower Drive.
So I, I don't have any objections to sending the draft letter that the planner's drafted.
Do I, Jeff, but I will say the package appears to be incomplete. There's a drawing that says basement floor plan, and then it says first floor. I don't know what that means, whether it's two or not, and that says second floor plan. And then you look at the elevations, I guess three floors, so there's, check this. Two, two things of levels, you know, in, in at least three floors, so.
I've got basement, first floor, and second floor, and it looks like it's cathedral. Right, if you look at the elevations, if you go to the next page after second floor plan, so you look at that, so the basement, that looks like, you know, it's got the windows in the basement, first floor, second floor. So yeah, with the basement, it, it appears that it's a walkout basement, so that's why it appears to be three stories.
I just want to tell everyone, you're just looking at the, the, basically the access. You're not looking at the building permit. That's just kind of extra.
And I was going to elaborate.
There's nothing to do with the building permit. Yeah.
Yeah, the new members, as well as some of the existing, we do like to gloviate on these for no good reason, but we really have no authority. We're sending a, a recommendation to the select board because they, they issue the building permits. We are tasked with looking at development in the area that may affect this area that may, they may want to know about that we have special insight to, but when it comes to construction style, things of that nature, that is code enforcement and building permit stuff, but, but we do like to talk about it. We all educate each other with the little things we know or don't know and we all. Yeah, I'll also add for the new members, if you're asking yourself then at this point that if we're only sending a letter over to the select board, who are the ones that actually have to approve this? Why are we even doing it? And the answer to that is, is because state law says that when the select board is making a decision on granting building permits such as this, that they're required to ask the planning board about it. We have no real authority over it, but they are required by law to ask us anyway. And it's a good exercise and, you know, several of the planning board members have issues with the narrow roads and some of these private roads in Barrington, and it is good for safety cause that he does like to bring it up and I, it's, 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 it's good to raise the eye of everybody to know that some of the roads are unsafe, untravelable, you know, depending, I don't know where some of our new members live, but there are some pretty, pretty rough roads, but we don't have the authority to say no, but we can throw our two cents at it, so. That's the, the letter, if you've read it, that we typically send, and if nobody has an objection, a motion to send this memo. I make a motion to send a letter on the building permit for map, map 112 lot 20, as drafted by the town plan.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, James Jennison, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Abstain because you're sending it to me, to me.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
All in favor, motion carries. All right. Anything else?
Just before we move on, so I think it's only with the building permit ones. It's, it's not very crisp. When I zoom in, I can't actually read a lot of the stuff in the plan. It seems to only be with, with the building permit ones, so if there's anything to do about that, great.
Yeah, these are some bad Xeroxes, it looks like. Anything else? I just threw my agenda away. Any other topics, pardon me? No, I was just going to say, so the next meeting will be at 6:30 on. May 4th. May 4th. A motion to adjourn until May 4th. I make a motion to adjourn until May 4th.
Second.
Mentioned by Jeff Brand, second by Andy Knapp, James Jennison, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Nice seeing you. Take care.